We will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, October 18th, 2021. As is always the case, I would ask everyone to please rise for a moment for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as always, we ask for special grace and blessing on all those from our community who are feeling under the weather. Unfortunately, we have learned in the past week of several Batavia residents who have been heavily stricken by the Corona disease and are in the hospital. We just ask a special blessing to be showered upon them and all those from our country who are also in a similar fate. Tonight, we also ask for vision and understanding on the part of the city council as we go about the items of business before us. And we just ask that everybody vote their conscience and understand the issues and that we are blessed in this community to have aldermen who closely follow what's going on in this community and have a handle on what specifically is happening in their wards. Tonight, we want to also remember those from our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. We just ask for a special blessing on each one of these men and women as they go about their vital mission. Tonight, we ask the council to carefully reflect on what they're voting on and go forth knowing in their own hearts and minds what their decision will be, will truly be in the best interest of the community, Batavia, and in the future. We ask for all these blessings, amen.
Alderman, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To reclaim our representative rights, our nation under God, to the people, to the citizens, for our home.
Ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Rizzato?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Euer?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vocal singer?
Here.
Thirteen, Your Honor.
We have thirteen. Record roll call shows thirteen present, one absent, and so we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving to item four, which is the reminder that if you're going to speak to us tonight in the room here or on the computer, that you use the best microphone you have available because sometimes it's hard for people in the audience or watching on TV or watching on the computer to understand if you don't closely let your voice be heard. Moving to item five, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we, anybody have anything? I guess not. Okay, moving to item number six. We have an oath in office to administer to Tom Conley, and I'm going to ask Alderman Wolf, who was chairman of the City Council Committee of the Whole recently where this decision was made, and then he's going to talk just briefly about the process, and after that, he will make a motion for the council's confirmation of Tom Conley as the new fourth ward alderman. Alderman Wolf.
Thank you, Your Honor. As we've done in the past when we've replaced somebody, what we have done is we seek basically a nomination or a letter of intent to come in, be before the City Council Committee of the Whole, so that way we can determine who out of the candidates we think is the next person we want to fill that seat. So typically, what we do is we have them come in, we do a short interview with them, read through whatever they sent us as an application, and then we adjourn to the alderman's room. We go through usually a very short deliberation, and then we vote, and it's a weighted vote that we go through, and then it's tabulated, and we decide, you know, we go with whatever comes up from that tabulation. In that, that's where we came up with Tom Conley. So I will make the motion that we approve Tom Conley as the fourth ward alderman.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Rur for the confirmation of Tom Conley to be the fourth ward alderman, replacing Alderman Knopp. Any further discussion? Record call the roll, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Conley? Chantet?
Aye.
Not yet.
Motion's approved by a vote of thirteen yes, one currently absent but soon to be filled, and the motion's approved. At this time, I would ask Tom Conley if you'd come forward and join me here in the front of the room so we get you on TV. Your mic is still on. And we got to get you on TV, so you stand over here. And we should raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Thomas Conley?
I, Thomas Conley.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the office of fourth ward alderman?
To the office of fourth ward alderman.
In the city of Batavia?
In the city of Batavia.
In the counties of Kane and DuPage?
In the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of fourth ward alderman?
Of the office of fourth ward alderman.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, welcome. Okay, I guess I'd ask that the record reflect that Alderman Conley has taken his seat in the council and is here now as a voting member, so, welcome. Okay, moving then to the consent agenda. Alderman Chantet, do you have this, please?
I do. Your Honor, the consent agenda, our read is as follows. To accept and place on file many of the whole minutes for August 24th and August 31st, 2021, plan and condition minutes from September 1st and September 15th, 2021, the building report for September 2021, the July 2021 and August 2021 city council financial reports. And for approvals, the October 15th, 2021 payroll on the amount of $929,419.19, the accounts payable check register and the amount of $4,271,909.75, city council minutes for October 4th, 2021. Resolution 21-95-R, authorization to execute contract for the 2021-2022 snow and ice removal services with Cozak Custom Landscapes, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $70,000. Ordinance 21-53, annexing properties on Morton, McKinley, Walnut Streets, there's a voluntary annexations. Resolution 21-98-R, authorizing a change order with NP System contract to perform testing for breaker replacement at Batavia substations in the amount of $54,539, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Resolution 21-99-R, authorizing a contract with Osmos to perform pole attachment audit for Batavia for an amount not to exceed $89,495, which includes a 10% contingency amount. And resolution 21-100-R, authorizing a contract with Osmos to perform pole inspection and treatment in Batavia for an amount not to exceed $207,900, which includes a 10% contingency amount. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the consent agenda as read. Any discussion? Chair, none. The clerk, please call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Fourteen.
Motion's approved by a vote of fourteen yes, no-nos, and none-absent. Moving then to item number eight, or matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody on the audience or online that wants to address us?
Laura, I think there was somebody online that was going to...
Do you have somebody online?
I think so.
Laura, do you find somebody who wants to?
Yes, I do. Joe Colada?
Who?
You should be able to unmute your microphone now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Hi, my name is Joe Colada. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I do have a comment and a quick question regards to River Option A. Let me reflect back to the quarry pool when the Lower South Dam was removed. A large leak due to the removal of that dam created roughly, I believe, 250, 300 gallons per day lost. It is a real possibility that this very same problem occur with Option A, concept Option A. How does the council feel about synthetic liner installation for the pond if this problem does occur with concept A?
I don't think we've even considered that yet, that that's even part of it, because we haven't approved any plan yet.
I would certainly may offer up the observation that certainly I think there's a high view on the city council that protecting the water surface in the pond is an item of concern and reality, and we would certainly ask in any engineering or any plan that's strong that we have some type of, I don't use the word guarantee, but some type of idea be put into place that will ensure that if maybe on a daily basis, a certain level of water is pumped into the pond or whatever. I know I've taken part in earlier discussions before all this has been done with the latest rendition in which we talked about potentially putting some type of a small pumping apparatus into the mainstream of the river that would then, on a daily basis, measuring how much water was needed, would pump that water into the depot pond and hold the level up. Because I don't think you have to be here too long to realize how many, literally hundreds, if not thousands, of people on a yearly basis come down and either walk the pond, or specifically, it's become very much an attraction, i.e. for prom night pictures at Batavia High School, homecoming night pictures, 50th wedding anniversary pictures, family pictures, Christmas cards. It's probably the most photographed location in Batavia, as far as I can tell. So I would think that that would certainly, I appreciate you bringing that up, but I would tell you that I think that's something that would have some certain priority and questions on the part of the city council that we would want to know that there is some guarantee put into place from an engineering perspective that ensures that that water level stay where it is, and if there is issues such as occurred with the removal of the South Dam, that we be aware of them and work to overcome them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, that was the only one.
All right. All right, moving then to item number nine, which is appointments, and as I believe most of you know, we've had several people rather recently who have been longtime members of the Batavia Historic Preservation Commission have had to resign either for family issues or moving out of state or whatever have you. So we need to have a couple of appointments because right now, we're just on the line as far as having enough on there to even hold a meeting. So I need to put two people on the Historic Preservation Commission, and I sent out a memo this past weekend to everybody suggesting that the two names that I would like to appoint is Susan Alderson for a three-year term, which will expire on 10/21/24, and Jamie Koch for a three-year term, which will also expire on 10/21/24. And both of these people, you may remember, Mrs. Alderson was one of the applicants for fourth ward alderman, and she's with DeVry University in an administrator's role and has a very deep-seated interest in Batavia as far as her interest in what's happening. I've talked to her a number of times over the years about things like historic preservation. And Jamie Koch is a relatively newer Batavia resident, but her and her husband bought the building right next to the Fox River there on the east bank of the river on the south side of the street, and she has opened up her business, Heart of the Home, which is a kitchen outfitting business. And I think she has a pretty deep-seated interest in historic preservation, so I'm very pleased with these two appointments. I think these are going to be worthwhile people who are going to make significant contributions to our community. So I would ask for a motion of confirmation on the part of the city council.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman...
Sulfah.
Any other comments? Now the clerk call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Okay, the appointment of Susan Alderson and Jamie Koch are approved by a vote of fourteen yes, no-nos, and none-absent. All right, moving then to item 10, which is proclamation for World Polio Day. Alderman Chantet, do you have this one?
I do. Your Honor, our proclamation, whereas Rotary International, founded February 23rd, 1905 in Chicago, Illinois, USA, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations, and whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary Club members comprised professional and business leaders in over 35,000 clubs in 200 countries and geographic areas, and whereas the Rotary motto "Service Above Self" inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize children of the world against polio, and whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date, Rotary has contributed more than $1.8 billion to endless volunteer hours to protection of more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries, and whereas Rotary is currently working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which would be further leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical personnel, laboratory equipment, educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $8 billion to the effort. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the city of Batavia, Illinois, by the signing of this official proclamation, do hereby proclaim Sunday, October 24th, 2021, as World Polio Day in Batavia, and encourage all residents to join myself and the Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor. Your Honor, I would move that we approve this proclamation as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Rizzato for the approval of the proclamation as read. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Okay, the appointment of Susan Alderson and Jamie Koch are approved by a vote of fourteen yes, no-nos, and none-absent. All right, moving then to item 10, which is proclamation for World Polio Day. Alderman Chantet, do you have this one?
I do. Your Honor, our proclamation, whereas Rotary International, founded February 23rd, 1905 in Chicago, Illinois, USA, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations, and whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary Club members comprised professional and business leaders in over 35,000 clubs in 200 countries and geographic areas, and whereas the Rotary motto "Service Above Self" inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize children of the world against polio, and whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date, Rotary has contributed more than $1.8 billion to endless volunteer hours to protection of more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries, and whereas Rotary is currently working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which would be further leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical personnel, laboratory equipment, educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $8 billion to the effort. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the city of Batavia, Illinois, by the signing of this official proclamation, do hereby proclaim Sunday, October 24th, 2021, as World Polio Day in Batavia, and encourage all residents to join myself and the Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor. Your Honor, I would move that we approve this proclamation as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Rizzato for the approval of the proclamation as read. Any discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Euer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Okay, the appointment of Susan Alderson and Jamie Koch are approved by a vote of fourteen yes, no-nos, and none-absent. All right, moving then to item 10, which is proclamation for World Polio Day. Alderman Chantet, do you have this one?
I do. Your Honor, our proclamation, whereas Rotary International, founded February 23rd, 1905 in Chicago, Illinois, USA, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations, and whereas there are over 1.2 million Rotary Club members comprised professional and business leaders in over 35,000 clubs in 200 countries and geographic areas, and whereas the Rotary motto "Service Above Self" inspires members to provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas Rotary in 1985 launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation to immunize children of the world against polio, and whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas to date, Rotary has contributed more than $1.8 billion to endless volunteer hours to protection of more than 2.5 billion children in 122 countries, and whereas Rotary is currently working to raise an additional $50 million per year, which would be further leveraged for maximum impact by an additional $100 million annually from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And whereas these efforts are providing much-needed operational support, medical personnel, laboratory equipment, educational materials for health workers and parents. And whereas in addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor governments to contribute more than $8 billion to the effort. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the city of Batavia, Illinois, by the signing of this official proclamation, do hereby proclaim Sunday, October 24th, 2021, as World Polio Day in Batavia, and encourage all residents to join myself and the Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor. Your Honor, I would move that we approve this proclamation as read.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chantet, second by Alderman Sulfah for the approval of a Class D1 license for Fernando's Street Kitchen located at 12 South Water Street. I certainly would like to jump on board here and say that I've known Fred since he was a small, young gentleman, and he's always been a very faithful and honorable citizen of Batavia and one who constantly is always there to kind of help out and volunteer his time and services, and I'm tickled to death that he's got a now downtown location and a face on his business that people can probably, the day will come when you'll have some tables inside and people will be able to go in and eat during the winter, I'm hoping.
Yes, sir.
You want to tell us a little bit about your operation?
Yeah, so again, Fernando's Street Kitchen started as a mobile catering business. Actually started doing the breakfast at the farmer's market four years ago, working off a little electric hot plate, making breakfast tacos. Snowballed into doing private parties, loading up a flat top in the back of a pickup truck, going to people's houses, doing it then. What, two years later, COVID hit, got quiet for a little bit, but then because we were mobile and able to package individual meals, we became in hot demand during COVID. Three trailers later, now we have three food trailers that go out and do events, and now the current brick and mortar location to hopefully be able to host mainly private events. We hope to continue just going with our caterers, our catering, that's been our heart and soul. But we're going to open up a few days during the week at the location as well, and as I said, hopefully we can get some more private events scheduled inside. We see on social media, a lot of people are always looking So that's a great thing, too. And now all our current, what, 200-plus members do we have that are so faithful about giving their time and their talents and their funds to help us keep this thing going? And I want to say to all of you who are Batavians, all of you back there, too, you're making history now, and we need to preserve that for future generations. So I would just like to personally invite you all to come and join the Historical Society and help us with this. So thank you so much. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, moving to item 12, which is a Class D1 liquor license. Applicant is Fernando's Street Kitchen located at 12 South Water Street.
I'm going to step out for this one, Mayor.
Okay. Who's got it?
Your Honor, I do. So the Batavia Police Department did conduct an investigation and background check, determined whether the business Fernando's Street Kitchen located at 12 South Water Street, and its president, Freddy Martinez, might be able to receive a Class D1 liquor license, that's an all liquor license, in Batavia. Mr. Martinez already has a Class I catering license for his catering business, which operates out of 6 North Water Street. All the documents required were turned in, and the investigation determined that there was no reason to preclude business from receiving this new license. So I would move that we approve Class D1 restaurant all liquor license for Fernando's Street Kitchen.
Second. Moved by Alderman Chansett, Second Amendment Sulfah, for the approval of a Class D1 license for Fernando's Street Kitchen located at 12 South Water Street. I certainly would like to jump on board here and say that I've known Fred since he was a small, young gentleman, and he's always been a very faithful and honorable citizen of Batavia and one who constantly is always there to kind of help out and volunteer his time and services. And I'm tickled to death that he's got a now downtown location and a face on his business that people can probably, the day will come when you'll have some tables inside and people will be able to go in and eat during the winter, I'm hoping.
Yes, sir.
You want to tell us a little bit about your operation?
All right, yeah, so again, so Fernando's Street Kitchen started as a mobile catering business. Actually started doing the breakfast at the farmer's market four years ago, working off a little electric hot plate, making breakfast tacos. Snowballed into doing private parties, loading up a flat top in the back of a pickup truck, going to people's houses, doing it then. What, two years later, COVID hit, got quiet for a little bit, but then because we were mobile and able to package individual meals, we became in hot demand during COVID. Three trailers later, now we have three food trailers that go out and do events, and now the current brick and mortar location to hopefully be able to host mainly private events. We hope to continue just going with our caterers, our catering, that's been our heart and soul. But we're going to open up a few days during the week at the location as well, and as I said, hopefully we can get some more private events scheduled inside. We see on social media, a lot of people are always looking for small venues that hold 30 to 40 people for baby showers, wedding showers, birthdays, things like that, so hopefully we can accommodate that as well.
Okay. Any questions of Fred?
Do you want to give your hours on Tuesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays?
Right now, currently, the hours that we're working with right now, we're going to mainly lunch and dinner on Tuesday, Thursday. So lunch will be 11 to 2, dinners will be 4 to 7. Saturdays, we're going to continue doing our breakfast in the morning, on Saturday mornings, from 8 to 11, and then we're going to open up for dinner from 4 to 7 on Saturday nights. And kind of just go from there right now. It's, we're still playing with the hours and the time. Right now, we know going into the winter, it's going to get a little colder, the time change is going to adjust people's eating habits as well. So again, we're just going to play it right now by here, and again, we got parties that are booked out through this year even for next year, so we're mainly concentrating on those and getting those out of there as well, so. But, yeah, no, definitely we're looking to definitely grow a little bit more. So see next spring, we may adjust the hours and maybe even add more days if we have to.
I just want the public to know that they need to get there early so that they can make sure.
Always helps to get there early. I know sometimes we've had a few that come at the last minute and we've run out of, you know, certain meat or certain items, so, you know, we definitely try to keep items fresh, especially at the limited times that we're out there. So, yeah, so sometimes we do run out of things, so. Not a bad thing, though.
No, it's not. It's a great thing. It's good food.
Any other questions of Fred? Now to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no no's, none absent. You're in business.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving to 13, which is the Main Street Report. Beth?
So we're wrapping up our 26th Farmer's Market season. We have one more week on River Street, and then the final market will be over on Houston and the U-shaped parking lot over here for Bat Fest. That's on October 30th, and we have Bat Fest that day as well. That's 10 to 2, and we have over 60 downtown businesses participating in the trick-or-treating. The indoor market will start on November 6th, and we were lucky enough to secure the 161st street space again, thanks to BEI. And right now, we have about 25 vendors on average per week. And boardwalk shops are going well. Any questions?
When, I have a question. How long are the boardwalk shops open?
They are open till December 21st. All right.
Do you have anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Well, thank you. Keep up the great job at Main Street. We, I'm amazed at all the people that I run into down here on Saturday morning who are telling me they're here from, let's see, last week I met some folks from Clarendon Hills. I met some people from Countryside, South La Grange, and I met some folks from Mundeline. And then I was talking to a couple of our vendors over there, and one tells me he's from Boone County up north of Belvedere. So, I mean, they're coming from great distances to come to this farmer's market that seems to have caught on very strongly, so.
Yeah, we've really had a great season, more vendors than we've ever had, the traffic's been great, and the same with our indoor market, you know, just, it's doubled from 2019, so we're really thrilled.
You must be doing something right, so thank you. Keep up the great work.
It's lots of work.
Thank you. All right, moving then to item 14, which is the Winding Creek Plan Development Subdivision at 37W 330 and 250 McKee Street. Alderman Wolf, do you?
Yes, I do, and just so the record reflects it, Alderman Beck is back in the meeting. Alderman Beck has returned to the meeting. I just wanted to make sure that got on the record that she's back. Okay, this is a subdivision plan out at the end of Deer Path Road where it runs into McKee Street, now called Winding Creek. The first of the five ordinances that we have is the amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map. That would be ordinance 21-54, basically to amend our comprehensive plan to include this development. So if anybody has any questions, we went through all these at Cow and had a good meeting, a lot of questions and a lot of things through to get all these ready to go here. If there are no other questions, I will make the motion that we approve ordinance 21-54, amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, Second Amendment Sulfah, for the approval of ordinance 21-54, amendment to the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Is that 14, or? Okay, that one, ordinance 21-54 is approved, 14 yes, no no's, none absent. Moving to B, which is ordinance 21-55, authorizing execution of an annexation agreement. Alderman Wolf?
Yes, this is the annexation agreement with the company to do these houses out there, and in that, within that annexation agreement is the, I believe it's halfway through, about halfway through, the building of the houses, the connection through on Branson Drive will happen with the bridge over Mill Creek, or the Mill Creek side of that. And I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 21-55.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, Second Amendment Sulfah, for the approval of ordinance 21-55, authorizing execution of an annexation agreement. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no no's, none absent. Moving to C, which is ordinance 21-56, annexing and zoning territory to the R1/M single-family medium-density in POS parks and open space districts. Alderman Wolf?
Yes, this is the annexation and zoning ordinance for this, and this would also include the parks in open space, which would be a large natural area at the south end of the property along McKee Street that attaches to the Trout, I don't know if it's called Trout Park, or what the park is right there just to the west, and then also denotes land within the development that would go to the Geneva Park District because the property does lie within the Geneva Park District. Any questions? I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 21-56.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, Second Amendment Sulfah, for the approval of ordinance 21-56, annexing and zoning territory to the R1M single-family medium-density in POS parks and open space districts. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Ordinance 21-56 is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no no's, none absent. Okay, moving to item D, ordinance 21-57, amending the official zoning map for the planned development overlay. Alderman Wolf?
This would be the amendment to our official zoning map for this planned development. Really, there's nothing more to that than what it says. No questions, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 21-57.
Second. Moved by Wolf, Second by Sulfah, for the approval of ordinance 21-57, amending the official zoning map for planned development overlay. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chansett. Alderman Chansett?
Aye.
Ordinance 21-57 is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no no's, none absent. Moving to E, which is Resolution 21-097-R, preliminary plat of subdivision for the Winding Creek subdivision. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the plat for the subdivision, which includes the streets, all the connections to the other stub streets that are from the neighborhood just to the east of it, and then the connection all the way through up to the subdivisions coming in off of Fabian Parkway. So I will make the motion that we approve Resolution 21-97-R, preliminary plat of subdivision for Winding Creek subdivision.
Second. Moved by Alderman Wolf, Second Amendment Sulfah, for the approval of Resolution 21-097-R, preliminary plat of subdivision for the Winding Creek subdivision. Any further conversation? Your Honor?
I just want to take a minute just to let the public know that this is really something that's been out there for a long time. We've had several different starts, or misfires, or whatever you want to call them, to get to this point. Really excited that this is finally going to happen because I think for almost the whole time I've been in the City Council, there's been talk of this finally getting done, and there are some connections in there that I think make a lot of sense for the public and the neighborhoods surrounding that, to make things easier to get from one place to another, to avoid and keep some of the traffic off of Randall Road, and to me, in a lot of ways, to make this much more pedestrian-friendly for people to get in and out of the parks. There's going to be a bike path through this, or a pathway through this that's maintained, some other parks that are there, and it does tie into other neighborhoods that are there and actually give you much more space to walk without having to try to traverse Randall Road at this point. So I think it, really with the connections that it makes, is a really good thing for the West Side out there.
Thank you. Any other comments? Kirk call the roll then on Resolution 21-097-R.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Resolution 21-097-R is approved, 14 yes, no no's, none absent. Okay, moving to 15, which is approval of waif formal bidding for purchase of 2021 Goodwin Trash Pump through the General Services Administration Purchasing Program. Who's got this one?
Yes, I'll take this.
Alderman Rizzato?
Yes, this is part of Resolution 2196-R, which was discussed and approved unanimously at the 10-5 Cow for a purchase of a pump, which we are buying from General Services Administration Purchasing Program. So I'll make a motion to waive formal bidding for the purchase of a 2021 Goodwin Trash Pump through GSA Purchasing Program.
Second. Moved by Alderman Rizzato, Second Amendment Wolf, for the approval of the waiver of formal bidding for the purchase of the 2021 Goodwin Trash Pump through the General Services Administration. Any discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Okay, the approval of the waiver of formal bidding is approved, 14 yes, no no's, none absent. That clears the way for us to go to item 16, which is Resolution 21-096-R, authorizing a purchase of a 2021 Goodwin Trash Pump through the General Services Administration Purchasing Program from Nylon Dewatering for an amount of $49,599.89. Alderman Rizzato?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Rizzato, Second Amendment Wolf, for the approval of the 2021 Goodwin Trash Pump through the General Services Administration. Any further discussion? Kirk call the roll.
Rizzato.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Connolly.
Aye.
Chansett.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Ayazi.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Ewer.
Aye.
Serone.
Aye.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Motion's approved by a vote of 14 yes, no no's, none absent, for the approval of Resolution 21-096-R for the purchase of the Goodwin Trash Pump through General Services Administration. Okay, moving to 17, the Administrator's Report.
Thank you. Got a few items to provide you with updates on. The staff in the Park District, of the Park District in the city met last Wednesday, and the purpose of that meeting was to discuss the City Council, the Committee, the whole meeting discussion that we had concerning the results of the survey, and then to plan
for a joint meeting between the Park Board and city council. And Allison Niomella, their executive director, informed me that the Park Board also would like to have a meeting for them to discuss the results of the survey, and then to come back together to see if we can settle upon one particular alternative moving forward, and the Park District is having that meeting tonight. So, we have a follow-up meeting scheduled for Wednesday with Hitchcock Group and the Park District to plan for that next joint meeting. So I'll let everybody know when we think that we can get that together. Also, the staff of the city and the Park District, as well as Hitchcock Design Group, WBK Engineering, Illinois Department of Natural Resources, and representatives from U.S. Army Corps of Engineers had a meeting today where we just kind of touched base with one another because all of these different constituent groups are going to have to work closely with one another to see the project through to fruition because we will be required to get permits from IDNR and permits from U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We also want to put ourselves in the best position possible if there are federal and/or state funding resources that might be utilized to assist us with this project. We wanted to understand what the process and what those deadlines might look like so that we can make sure that we don't miss any opportunities for assistance. The members of the IDNR and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers were incredibly helpful to us today and provided us with resources to make sure that we kind of stay on track to be sure that we can have the smoothest process possible with them. So it was a really valuable meeting. The city is participating in a program. The UIC Energy Resources Center is distributing free income eligible energy savings kits. They include LED bulbs, an LED nightlight, an advanced power strip, a high efficiency showerhead, high efficiency aerators, and educational instructions that help our residents make money-saving improvements, and this is for households that are below the lower eighty percent of the area median income for ours zip code. And interested households can contact our utility billing department or come in, and there's a form that they fill out for verification of income, and we've ordered twenty-five of these kits to start, but if we find that there's a higher demand for them, we can always order more while they're still available through UIC. Households that receive the kits have saved $76 per year on their electric bills, and the program runs through the end of this year, at least, and hopefully perhaps if it's a very successful program, it might continue into the future. The Plan Commission will have their next meeting on Wednesday, and this will include a continued public hearing for rezoning of two parcels on South River Street owned by the Batavia Park District, two parks and open space. It's a review of the plat of subdivision for the LTGI Friday site on Randall and Mill, and a review of the land cash value numbers per the direction of the committee of the whole. Reviews for the Avenue Marketplace project, including site development and permits for the Chipotle and Starbucks project, have been completed and sent to the applicants, and Menards has completed the connection to their new detention pond on the south side of McKee Street, and now they'll be able to fill the existing basin for construction of the new storage building. Preparations are underway for the upcoming fall leaf collection program. The city has taken receipts of a new leaf collection machine, and Public Works has been working with Fermilab to address some infiltration issues within their sanitary sewer system, which is tributary to the city. Fermilab has informed us that they're proceeding forward with the project this fall to seal manholes and pipes within their system, which should help with the drainage in that area. Barricades will remain in place for North River Street outdoor dining closure until late November, or as long as weather conditions permit in the event that there's a heavy snowfall. That would be something that would require us to take up that road closure devices sooner than expected. And design plans for the one-way conversion project are close to being completed and should be resubmitted to IDOT for review in the coming weeks. And that's all that I have unless anyone has any particular questions for me.
Alderman Wolf.
I know we saw an email last week about the water main work at the corner of Wilson Street and South Route 25. Yes. River Street. Do we have any better idea of when that's going to happen and how quick we're going to have to mobilize barriers, or, you know, whatever we have to do to be able to redirect traffic at that corner, because I know that that's going to be a real issue downtown. Absolutely. We are going to, at least three days prior to the road closures happening, we're going to utilize our electronic message boards on both Wilson Street and River Street in order to inform the public that those, to expect those road closures, and perhaps to avoid that area, if at all possible, during the times that they will be closed, and I'm expecting that that to occur at some point within the next two weeks. We are still trying to find availability for our contractor to perform that work. Okay.
Alderman Soffa.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions about the work in Ward One. It seems to be almost all done, but I had some residents inquire as to a couple of things. One was whether there was going to be the, like a street cleaner come through and try to get up all the asphalt and all the mud and everything else from the, from the street where all the work took place. And then, even though it seems like most of the material's been taken away, there's still a couple of yards in terms of the parkways that seem like they have not yet had the...
Restoration?
Restoration done yet. One's like right in front of 1057, and then right across the street from 1073 where they had a bunch of just, you know, materials and pipes in the yards, and so they were just concerned that they didn't want to be forgotten.
Okay. I'll make sure that engineering addresses both of those issues. Thank you. Thanks for reminding me. One more on Morton Street. I know we've talked about this before, but there's still issues out on Morton Street. I think it's in the 800 block that we need to finalize what was done out there, and I think it's just at the very edge of where the work was done. Okay. But there's still stuff that has to come out of front yards or parkways that needs to be cleaned out out there. I'll follow up on that. So before they go and try to pull leaves out there, they need to get the rest of the stuff out of the way. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Anybody else? Other questions? Okay, going to committee reports, the community development, Alderman Wolf.
I have no report tonight. Thank you.
Public Utilities, Alderman Risotto.
Serone.
Serone has.
Nothing to report other than a discussion tomorrow about speed limits.
Okay. Community or Government Services, Alderman Chantet.
I have no report, Your Honor.
And...
City Services. Yeah, there's no report.
No report, okay. Very good. Other business from the city council? Okay, going to twenty, the mayor's report. I just have a couple of things I'd like to share. Number one, I want to talk about masks. If you walk around Batavia, you see there's a lot of people still wear them, and you see there's a lot of people who will not wear them or aren't wearing them or whatever. I specifically don't wear one during the meeting because I have received a number of complaints from people who tell me that they're trying to watch us on TV, and if I have my mask on, they have a very difficult time understanding me and hearing what I'm saying. And so, I guess I would encourage all the rest of you, if you're going to be making any speech of any length, that maybe if nothing else, pull it down on your chin for a minute and just let your voice be heard clearly, because this is a, you know, people think that we're down here trying to pull something off because they can't understand us when they're watching it on TV. And so, I know that that is a concern and it is a problem, and I fully appreciate, you know, given some of the issues we're now facing with some of our residents and, you know, various serious health issues regarding the Corona, that we got to pay attention to what's going on, but in the same token, we certainly want to keep the government open to a degree that people can understand us. And I will share with you, we're not alone in this. I'm on the phone every week with a number of other mayors, and this is a common problem throughout the entire region where people are not able to understand or hear what is being said at meetings. I had a couple of times here tonight when I was kind of chasing around, holding up on saying who the second was because I couldn't really kind of tell from conversations that were going on on both, both sides of me here. So, I just say that not to make any excuses, but just offer that as a suggestion to everybody that if you're going to talk for any length, you may want to just pull down your mask for a couple of minutes while you're talking, pull it back up, because I know people are not able to hear sometimes with the mask on. Next subject I want to talk about is, is that, as most of you know, I do review the activities of the Batavia Police Department on a daily basis. I read their crime statistics of what's happened in town in the last 24 hours, and I will tell you that I am concerned about some of the things I'm seeing, and I'm thankful that we have the outstanding police department and administration of that department that we have, because we are being challenged there, and I'm not trying to scare anybody or stir anything up, but, you know, I gave my weekly report that some of you may watch on our city website, and one of the things I did last week was I had our newly appointed deputy chief give a little report about some activity we had experienced last week on the southeast side of town, where we had some visitors from someplace came into Batavia and started perusing the streets looking for cars sitting in the driveway. And what they would then do is they would get out and walk the block and try every door on the cars to see what, if any of them were unlocked. And if they were, they would enter the car and see what they could find for themselves, and then somebody would wait down the street from where they were so nobody could grab a license plate on any camera or anything, and then they'd run back. As far as we know, we got hit a couple times and nobody's, we found the cars that were gone through, but we didn't find anything missing. But we do have people out there that are perusing the streets of Batavia and looking for stuff to steal. And as I think I've shared with you before, earlier this year, we had a situation over on the west side where they went into a driveway and lo and behold, they found the car door open, so they used that as the opportunity to open the garage door because there was a garage door opener inside the car in the driveway. When they did that, they got themselves in the garage, and there sat a car that had the keys in it. And so they got in that car, started it up, and the car's never been seen since. And the last time we saw it or had any trace of it was through I-Pass, and it had that on it, and it got down on I-57 south of 80, and that was the last we saw of that car and have ever seen it since. And we know some of these people are stealing these cars, and then once they steal them, they may have a ready set of license plates in the car, so they get down someplace a couple miles away, and they whip out the old plate and put this new stolen one probably on there, but at least if they get a report that a certain car's been stolen with a license plate, you're not going to see that license plate on the car because these people are already smart enough to take the plate off. So, between that going on, and then we have, we do have a kind of a wandering vagrant problem in town where we have several individuals who are becoming, I would describe them regular customers of the Batavia Police Department, and they're wandering around both sides of town, and we never know from one day to the next where they're sleeping, or where they're not sleeping, or what they're doing. Some of them seem to have a preponderance for wanting to go to school playgrounds and sleep on the playground equipment. Or we've got at least one that I've heard of that was going into dumpsters and finding large cardboard boxes, and then he would carry that box over to some place where he could find an electrical outlet on the outside of the house or the building, and then he would plug in his cell phone to recharge his cell phone while he slept inside the box, which he had pulled up against the side of the building. So, we're just dealing with all kinds of stuff, and we seem to have a lot of mental illness going on, and we also seem to have an inordinate number of ambulance calls for not, not to be life-threatening injuries, but just stuff that takes up time. So I will tell you that when you're riding around Batavia, and thanks to the leadership that we have in the police department, you know, every Batavia police car to a large degree is highly decorated with lettering, so you know that there are police cars, and so we try to maintain a high visibility of our police with the idea that the police, anybody that comes in here and wants to think they're going to shop around Batavia is probably going to see some of these high-visibility cars and decide, well, let's go someplace else where maybe there aren't as many cops going around. But, you know, if there's one thing I got to tell you I feel like we need right now, it's police, because we have some, some issues going on, they're not, nobody's, we're not having the shootings, God forbid that you got other parts of the region, but we certainly are having a lot of activity that is bringing a lot of interesting situations to our town, and I'm ever thankful that we got as many police as we do, and I'm not so sure the day isn't coming pretty soon, and we need to have a few more, because this is a situation, and I'm not, we're not unique here. I tell you, again, you know, I have several leadership roles in the region amongst the mayors, and I get conversations all the time from other cities about having the same problem and the need for testing how good the police department is because of all these people wandering around. I had one mayor, I won't say who, tell me that they caught a couple gentlemen that were in the cars in their neighborhood, and they told him, or they didn't tell him, but they told the police department that they came out to this town because this was a shopping center of affluence, and these towns all had nice cars, and people had nice things in those cars, and they could kind of shop around and see what they could do, and if they go to other parts of the region, there's not as much money or viability of opportunities, so there isn't as much stuff to be stolen. But, you know, I think we are a shopping center of affluence in Batavia, and I would encourage everybody to keep that in mind, and please keep a high, high ground, and it's pretty easy to figure out what you need to do as far as your car in your garage, or if you can't put it in the garage, keep it locked at night, because we do have people perusing around here wanting to get in. The other thing, I just want to make an announcement, we're getting near the Christmas time or the holiday season, and once again, this will be the 71st year, the Batavia's going to have the Batavia Access Toy Program, it's going to be out at Sam's Club again. We've reached an agreement with the county, they're letting us take a portion of the building, and we're going to be distributing toys to needy Batavia families, which we've been able to identify through a cooperative idea of the, of the schools and the churches and the police department and the fire department and others, trying to get together and figure out what families may need some support. And so then we send them a letter and invite them to come on a day in December and get some toys. And last year, we were able to service, I think the number was 716 kids in Batavia got toys out, toys or clothing or something out of there for the Christmas time. If we hadn't have done that, I think there would have been a lot of them, and probably gotten nothing on Christmas.